Good evening. Welcome to the June 15th City Council Meeting. Would Commissioner Smith, you give us the prayer pledge and fact of the day, please, sir?
Let's assume the attitude of prayer. Most gracious, Almighty God, our Father, we thank you now for this opportunity to come to take up business of this city. We ask you, Heavenly Father, for your continued guidance, that you continue to lead and direct our mayor and these commissioners as we do the things that's in the best interest of all the citizens of the city of Apopka. We ask you of all that we shall do, we please and accept it but in your sight. In thy Son Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Fact of the day. On June 14th, 1777, Congress adopted the Stars and Stripes as official flag of the United States. The national flag is based on a flag by the Continental Army in 1776. The flag had thirteen red and white alternated stripes and thirteen stars representing the original colonies which became the first states. As new states entered the Union, more stripes and stars were added. In 1818, Congress acted along that the thirteen original stripes be restored and only stars be added to represent the new states. Today, the flag has thirteen stripes to represent the original thirteen colonies and fifty stars to represent the current fifty states. On June 14th, 1877, the Flag Day was observed on the 100th anniversary of the adoption of the Stars and Stripes. Several states continued the observance of Flag Day that in 1949, Congress officially designated June 14th as Flag Day. Fact of the day.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Approval of amendments. Any changes, additions, tractions? If not, look for a motion to approve.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Agenda review. Michael?
No change to the agenda.
Okay. Susan, public comment. Name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name is Carlos Medley, and I am the Community Service Liaison for Patmos Chapel Seventh Day Adventist Church, located at 110 Athletes Way. For several years, Patmos Chapel has made a major contribution to the health of Apopka through our food drive. In 2021, we served more than 20,000 persons, and this year, we're on track to serve more than 30,000 persons. Second Harvest Food Bank has designated Patmos as one of its largest distribution points in Orange County. But tonight, tonight, I'm not here to talk about food shortages and hunger, as important as those topics are. Tonight, Patmos joins with several ministries such as Hope for Apopka, First Baptist Church, and First Yom Ha'atzan Methodist Church to voice our concerns about the city's homeless problem. Currently, you'll find the homeless sleeping in city parks, in the woods, in trenches, and on church lawns. They're constantly exposed to the elements. As they sleep, many are vulnerable to thunderstorms, insects, and snakes in the summer, and frigid temperatures in the winter, and they're an open target to anyone that wants to do them harm. The bottom line is this: The homeless need housing. They need a designated space. You know, there are many homeless individuals that have regular jobs, full-time jobs, but still, they can't afford the cost of the high rents in this market. Wouldn't it be wonderful if they could sleep in a bed after taking a shower at night, to safely lock up their belongings, to wake up to adequate restroom facilities, and a space to change clothes? Wouldn't it be wonderful to lodge in a place that's supervised by people who genuinely care about them, a place where somebody knows them by name? These are the needed elements that will help the homeless restore their dignity. So my plea tonight is very simple. First, I ask the Commission to commission a study or survey to determine the size and scope of the issue, and then, after gathering those facts, to explore and develop housing solutions, be they transitional, short-term, or long-term housing. I know this will take some time, but that's why we should start the process now. You know, as city commissioners, you were elected to make Apopka a better place, to move it forward. You have priorities such as building a tax base, creating new jobs, and beautifying the city, making it an attractive place. By bringing our concerns tonight, we're simply saying, as you move the city forward, as you take it to the next level and place it on the cutting edge, that you leave no one behind. Leave no one behind. Leave no one behind. And in the balance of my time, I'd like to ask all those who are here, for your concerns of the homeless, to stand. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Rod Olson.
Wait, Rod Olson's coming forward.
Sorry.
If you signed a...
Yes, I did. Well, he said, I was asking, there's two Robsons, so he must be...
Rod Olson.
No, okay, I thought you said Robinson.
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane, Apopka. Surprise subject: Schools. As I see more and more development continue to roll in, people can call it whatever they want, it's a rubber stamp process. Three years ago, when I attended a meeting, I was just four years ago now, when Melissa Byrd first came on board at Wolf Lake Middle Elementary School, I don't recall which, and one of the associate or assistant superintendents was there as well, indicated that the school board had a mandate to approve all new development. You know me well enough, I went to Teresa and the barber right away, and I said, "Show me the memo." Well, there's no memo. Oh, well, can you tell me the last time in the 15 years the school board has said no development? And there was zero. As you know, I think it was a couple of years ago, for the first time, we had an issue, I think it was with Hammrick, that the school board was in here and doing it. We have to get more affirmative in addressing this. We need to address it with the school board. Right now, the school board's indicating, hey, it's up in Tallahassee. We need to put together a team to go up to Tallahassee and Rattle Cage as we do. We all know, and it's been beaten to death, all the shootings in schools. When you look at the overcrowding, the inordinate amount of overcrowding in our schools here in Apopka, we are a target. You could go up in the stairwell and kill two or 300 students in the high school tomorrow. Not tomorrow, I guess you're off at school. You cannot move, if you've not stopped by the school to look at Apopka High School at class change, you can't move up and down the stairwell. And I was, I've talked about before, Wolf Lake Middle, all the kids have to go to the auditorium, and they have to go to the gymnasium at the beginning of the day so they can be watched because of all the fighting. There are 400 over capacity. Now, we know the K-8 on the new Kelly Park School is primarily because, at that time, three of the four commissioners and new mayor got up and spoke at Orange County Public Schools, and so you can move the needle. The first school scheduled for Apopka was in 2026. We've got one coming in in 2022, and with the development, you have the table now, that's the 12 spaces for portables, are going to be filled probably within two years. We can't continue to keep jamming kids into our schools. The quality of education, you look at many schools across the country, even across the state, you have to add together the top three school districts to beat our 2,100 portables by 100. It's got to stop, and I'm willing to do anything to work with you to make this happen, but we have got to move that needle. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pastor Scott Ballew, and I'm the founder of Matthew's Hope. I have been here way too many times. We started Matthew's Hope 12 years ago. I first talked to some of you here 12 years ago. Not only has things not changed, they continue to get worse. Lately, we hear reports that are very seriously, should be considered if you are the leaders of this community. Mr. Smith, you mentioned tonight, "For all the people." I believe you believe that. We're not addressing things for all the people, Mr. Mayor. You know it. I know it. It's time we talked about it. Why we spend so much time shoving this away, we get focused on, you have, here's the crisis you have. You have a homeless crisis, you have a housing crisis, you have a mental health care crisis. You have a problem with seniors and those with disabilities who, because of their low incomes, can no longer keep a roof over their head, and all we hear about is the drug issue we have. Here's a little fact you might want to consider, and I'm surprised nobody has researched, that the fact is, is that drug addicts don't become homeless. Homeless people become drug addicts. That's a fact. Do your research. Why would you believe a pastor? I can tell you anything I want, but it's getting old. And Brian, I've known you for a long time. You're the mayor. When are you going to actually do something, other than the rumor that I recently heard that you, as Mr. Mayor, that you yourself want to clear the homeless of Apopka? Clear them out of Apopka. Now, here's the thing, the only reason I believe this was said by somebody is because my mobile teams come out here twice a week. We are currently, we have added 450 homeless people from Apopka to our roles, that we are offering mental health care to, providing medications with my psychiatric nurse practitioner, we've tried transportation to appointments for medical, medical care. We are helping people get their IDs, their birth certificate, social security cards, social security benefits, VA benefits, food stamps, phones. We're supplying everything they possibly need to leave to be able to even survive, and what we get is we see harassment. We have seen harassment of the homeless. We've witnessed it. Nobody can tell me it doesn't happen. I've witnessed it with my own eyes. But what sickens me even more is that I've had board members that have gone out, people that were vice president at Darden, he probably knows what he's doing, that basically was looked at and said, "You're lying." Who was so upset, wanted to talk about it, "You're lying." That's not what we see. So we're harassing the homeless, we're now harassing the volunteers, my staff, there's no reason for it. This will never change until we come together as a public and private organizations. You've got several people in this room that stood up here that are trying to do something. You've got an organization that doesn't take a cent of government money, that comes over here, provides transportation for your 450 homeless people, provides all these services, and we have to chase them down day to day because they are being moved to place to place. Changing homelessness is not arresting it away. It won't happen. I don't care who you are. My daughter's a police officer, and she laughs every time she hears something. Well, just arrest them. Then what? They spend three days at the 33rd, and they get released. You bankrupt them, they spend 30 days at Aspire, and they get released, but nothing, there is no follow-up care or what have you whatsoever. And at some point, it's got to change. We can't keep doing it the way we do and expect something different. That's the sheer definition of insanity, and if you don't see what's going on in the growth of your community, you have no idea how bad it's getting and what is going to happen with it in time.
I appreciate your time.
That's all the speaker cards I have. I don't know, Mr. Rod, do you have a speaker card?
I have a good one up here.
Well, come on up, just give your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name is Alex Robertson. I lived in 1997, Metal Chris Drive, in Apopka, Florida. I'm coming tonight in reference to our Homeland Association, and I'm speaking in reference to Rogers Road. I'm 100% service-connected veteran. I hurt my leg on a jump, and I cannot walk long distance. I use a walker and I use a scooter, but on Rogers Road, there's no sidewalks. It's very serious because of the fact, I hope people don't, I hope that no one loses their life, because I was taking pictures this afternoon, and I almost got hit twice. There's no sidewalk to walk on the road, there's no lighting if they come down at night, and since I moved in in 2015 in Lester Ridge, they're actually put in two or three more subdivisions at the end of that road. So you can imagine the traffic that's going down that road, and it's coming down a hill in which you cannot see if you come out of the subdivision. And what I wanted to ask is, can they put a sidewalk there for the disabled veterans and the disabled people, and also people just walking on the road before someone loses their life walking down that road? And that's all I wanted to address tonight, to see what the city of Apopka can do for this matter, because, like I said, I hope no one loses their life before something has to be done about the situation. And there's no sidewalk whatsoever on the left side of the road, nor goes down from my sidewalk to the road of Lester Ridge either. That's what I wanted to make the comment about tonight.
Thank you. We got a couple of folks from our public services are here tonight, so they'll take a note for you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have it? Okay. All right. Consent agenda. We've got six items on the consent agenda. Anybody need to pull any of those items? Got questions? If not, I'd like to see a motion to approve the six consent agenda items.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next up, Michael.
Good evening. The item for you today, at this present time, is a request to waive the time limits for resubmital of a petition pursuant to Section 2.4.12D1A of the Land Development Code. This item is a quasi-judicial procedural matter, so first put on notice to those, there will be no public comment. Secondly, this matter being quasi-judicial, at this time, I'd request that if any of members of the council have had ex parte communications with the petitioner, to please disclose them at this time.
I have.
When you say ex parte...
Have you spoken to representatives of the petitioner?
Yes.
Yes.
Anybody else?
I have as well.
Okay. All right. Now to the substantive matter of the request. The petitioner said Southwick Commons is requesting that their matter that was presented before the council in, get the right date, but I believe it was in May or April, sorry, be reconsidered by the city council. The matter that was considered was a request to amend the development agreement for the city center project to remove language that was affecting their application. Under the Land Development Code, any matter that is brought before the council for a public hearing cannot be resubmitted to the council for a time period of one year. Council does have the authority to waive that time limit, but the applicant must show that they meet one of the four criteria for such a waiver. For the record, the four criteria for such a waiver include, one, that there's a substantial change in circumstances relevant to the issues or facts considered during review of the prior application that might reasonably affect the decision-making body's application, other relevant review standards to the development proposed in the new application. Two, newer additional information is available that was not available at the time of review of the prior application, and that might reasonably affect the decision-making body's application of the relevant review standards to the development proposed in the new application. Three, the new application proposed to be submitted is materially different from the prior application, or, four, the final decision on the prior application was based on a material mistake of fact. The petitioners have submitted their request and have submitted that they meet standards one, two, or four. The main impetus of their request is that they have, are now stating that Section 760.26 Florida statutes deems that the development agreement as written is violative of the statute in that it purportedly discriminates on the basis of source of funding. So what you are to decide tonight is you will hear the presentation of the applicant just to support their request based on one of the four criteria of the code, and then you are to judge only on those merits whether or not the applicant meets one of the four criteria. We are not here to relitigate the basis of their application. We are not here to relitigate any substantive matters regarding their application. The only matters to be presented and decided upon here tonight are whether or not the applicant meets one of the four criteria to be reheard. Under the Land Development Code, in order for such a matter to be adopted, to be passed and reheard, the code requires two-thirds of this council to vote in the affirmative. Two-thirds constitutes four votes, so four of you must vote in the affirmative to reconsider the matter. If such a vote is taken and this council elects to reconsider the matter, the matter will be brought at the next scheduled public hearing, next scheduled council meeting in which the application will be reconsidered. But as I stated again, repeat, and I'd like to stress, this is a procedural matter, and the only matter to be decided now is, has the applicant met one of the four criteria for their matter to be reconsidered? At this point, I'll yield to the applicant.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, for your time this evening. Rebecca Wilson, 215 North Eola Drive, here on behalf of Southwick. I agree with your attorney that tonight, we're here asking you to consider, to consider the reconsideration of our application, which was to amend the restated development agreement with Southwick Commons for the 12.82 acre apartment site in order to allow affordable housing. I agree with your attorney with regard to the code sections that are applicable. As he stated, we believe that we meet the criteria set forth in, number one, that there's been a change in the relevant facts, in, number two, that there's additional information that might reasonably affect the decision-making of this body, and, number four, that the final decision on the application was based on a material mistake of fact. Since the meeting on May 4th, we have provided to the city attorney two state statutes that we believe should have been considered. Statute 760.26, which makes it unlawful to discriminate in land use decisions or in permitting of development based on race, color, national origin, sex, disability, familial status, religion, or, except as otherwise provided by law, the source of financing of a development or a proposed development. And our request went right to the source of financing. And then, secondly, we've also provided him with Section 712.065, which requires the extinguishment of discriminatory restrictions, and we have letters that have briefed him on our legal opinion on those matters. We wanted to bring this back to the board in order to give this group the option to rehear this matter and change that decision since the May 4th denial, and I'll put these letters in the record, Mayor. And Mayor, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Any questions?
Obviously, the first time around, it was a three to two vote. I don't know if hearing it again will change that vote. I think it will just delay it again, but what I would like to know is, if you don't get the vote tonight, what would be the next step for Wendover's Corporation? What would be his next step?
Well, if we're not given the opportunity to bring this back to the council, then our next step has to be filing a lawsuit based on these statutes that we believe support our position.
So you're bringing it forth again to be heard again under which section?
Under section, I believe the clearest is Florida statutes, Section 760.26, which makes it unlawful to discriminate based on the source of financing of a development or a proposed development. And if you remember, the discussion is based around the word "market rate" and "subsidized", and I believe it was this group's decision that, I don't want to get too far into it, but that, that our source of funding was, in fact, a subsidy.
Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
Okay. Well, that was definitely part of the discussion there, but again, to me, our responsibility with those who have already been there presently was, was the developer's agreement, and going back on that, one of the key issues there was the market rate. So the fact that that other was discovered, or discussed as part of that, I don't see that that information wasn't available at that time. I mean, I hear you bringing it forward now as an argument against that, but I think we still have the whole of the issue, so I don't think that was the criteria or only that, at least in my, my decision-making process. So I'm having a tough time getting to that bar on these different ones. I guess I would like to ask, concerning that, bringing up this other statute, 760.26, that was already available at that time, is the argument that it wasn't presented?
I don't believe you all considered that at that time, those particular statutes.
Okay. Well...
No, we did not. I did not at that time. I can tell you, it was not brought up the first time. What I don't understand is, if it is being brought up this time, can it be considered?
Solely on the merits of what the request is and what the standards that you have to meet pursuant to the Land Development Code for reconsideration, it would be my position that this isn't a new fact. Section 760.26 Florida statutes, it's adopted in 2000. So this isn't like, this isn't a legislative action that was adopted in between or shortly subsequent to the council's first action on the application. So that it was not considered is not really a basis, but that it's the basis under one and, under one, two, is either newer additional information that is available that was not available at the time of review. And as to subsection two, 760.26 was available, that the applicant did not present it at the time for it to be considered. It was available for review, that it wasn't, that it was reviewed or not, I would press into issue that I think that's an issue of law that has not been determined... I would press into issue that I think that's an issue of law that has not been determinably decided by the courts of the state of Florida. And it is actually my position that I think that some of the language in 760.26 may be inconsistent with federal jurisprudence in regards to the Fair Housing Act and how it is to be interpreted in regards to source of funding, especially with that caveat in 760.26, which is, except as otherwise provided by law. That's for the courts to decide, and no court in Florida has decided yet on the language. There's no court rulings on 760.26. For the record, I want to respond also, because council raised that the other issue that should have been considered was Section 712.065.
065, yeah.
Right. Now, council is correctly reading subsection two of 712.065, which is that a discriminatory restriction is not enforceable in this state, and all discriminatory restrictions contained in any title transaction recorded in this state are unlawful, are unenforceable, and are declared null and void. Any discriminatory restriction contained in a previously recorded title transaction is extinguished and severed from the recorded title transaction, and the remainder of the title transaction remains enforceable and effective. The rest of the language continues on certain recording and notice. But what council did not raise is subsection one of 712.065, which states, as used in this section, the term discriminatory restriction means a provision in a title transaction recorded in this state which restricts the ownership, occupancy, or use of any real property in the state by any natural person on the basis of a characteristic that has been held or is held after September 4th, 2020 by the United States Supreme Court or the Florida Supreme Court to be protected against discrimination under the Fourteenth Amendment of the United States Constitution or under Section 2, Article 1 of the state constitution, including race, color, national origin, religion, gender, or physical disability. Which puts at issue that the state of Florida created this other classification with the caveat, except as otherwise provided by law, hence the source of the funding. When it comes to source of funding and decision in land use matters, the Eleventh Circuit, which is the federal circuit that governs the state of Florida, has been all over the place in making determinations whether or not there are certain, where there is a claim of a discriminatory intent when it comes to, in certain federal cases, in regards to public housing, oh, I'm sorry, subsidized housing or low-income housing. So it's not a matter that's, that's a determinative, determinative right established under any holdings of the U.S. Supreme Court or the Florida Supreme Court. So as the term is defined in 712, it calls into question that this, this would not be applicable. And I think the intent of 712, 712 is, is basically to eliminate certain deed restrictions that may have existed prior to the 1960s, and they're out there, in where neighborhoods prohibited African Americans from purchasing homes, prominently in, I mean, where I'm from, South Florida, there were many deed restrictions that prohibited Jews from owning property. So it's those private deed restrictions that are deemed null and void under 712. Now, the issue as to, the issue and what's at issue in this case and in their request is the language in regards to the source of funding. I don't believe 712 covers that, because that is not a classification that has been deemed, at least in the federal courts, as one that is, that warrants the same protection as race, national origin, religion, disability. That doesn't, that doesn't fall there. So what we've got is a kind of a carved-out state creative entity, and in preparation for this, I can do the research, that there are only two other states that take this into consideration when it comes to source of funding, or, in other words, affordable housing. North Carolina and Virginia are the only two states that I was able to find, and both those states actually contain a caveat in their statute that says that local governments may still take into consideration and may, and it's not deemed discrimination if a project is sudden to not, if there's a denial of a project for affordable housing, if the city intends to reduce or not have a high concentration of affordable housing within their jurisdictions. So there's certain caveats in, in those other two states that have similar laws to what Florida attempted. Florida, as I believe, is overbroad and overvague, but that's for the courts to decide, that's not for you to decide. What is for you to decide now is, do they meet one of the four in order for this matter to be reconsidered? Yes or no? Either way, you vote, then we move on from there.
Mayor, may I just, because there's a clear lack of understanding of how these two laws work together and, and generally the jurisprudence of, of fair housing. Let me first get to the point. I think we very squarely fall within number four, and we only have to meet one criteria, and that's the final decision that this board made was based on a material mistake of fact. And I do believe that you have been led to believe that the decision you made was lawful, not discriminatory, and is not violative of these Florida statutes. We believe it is, and if the jurisprudence is all over on it, we intend to make it very clear through our lawsuit and go as far as we need to on this. And if you don't know my client, he's willing to do that and has done so to defend affordable housing in other jurisdictions in the state. But directly to this, 712.065, I agree, has nothing to do with source of funding. It prohibits discrimination based on race and disability. And when we file this lawsuit, one of the things we have to do is engage an expert to go through what's called a disparate impact analysis. And it shows how, when local governments make decisions about affordable housing, they are most likely, and we assume that this impact study will show the same, to impact minorities disproportionately and those with disabilities disproportionately. When we get, if we are allowed to come back, we can share with you our requirements under our financing that require us to serve a certain percentage of the disabled. So that is completely separate from the second way we believe that the decision violates the Florida statutes and that it was discriminating against my client based on the source of financing of a development or a proposed development. We just simply ask the ability to come back again to have this discussion, and, and we are trying to avoid litigation. We don't think that's what's best for the piece of property over there to be wrapped up in, in litigation over this and likely not the best use of city resources.
Well, again, I don't understand if this was already available, why it wasn't brought up to try and refute that when we were discussing it before. So, but to me, again, it's, we've made an agreement with those and others who have already invested there. We can't have the bully factor come in that, you know, we have the right to go this way regardless of what you've already agreed with others. We are very open to the product that is produced. And if we were doing this across the board in this city, I'd throw a fit, because we do need that workforce housing and those different things. It's, the problem is, we've already made an agreement with the public about this, and the standard there, the expectation, is just, I didn't see it being met in the argument. So that was my criteria, not based upon these other particular issues, though they were discussed, you know, grant that.
So I think our point is, if you make an agreement that's discriminatory, it may be better to fix that agreement.
But it wasn't a discriminatory, that wasn't what it was based upon.
I know that wasn't probably the intent when that was added there, but I believe that, that we've been able to demonstrate, or will when we bring this lawsuit, that it does have that disparate impact when you limit the ability to build affordable housing in the city.
When you have a development based upon the ability for those who come in to sustain their business model, and they, you know, as I said, and, you know, and I guess you had said that you're friends with the gentleman, that's why I did really specifically talk to him about that, that he's feeling that it has nothing to do with these other criteria of race or disability, anything like that. It has to do with a certain expectation that they went in there to develop believing that this was going to be on a higher-end market that would sustain what they have. So to me, it's not that issue. Again, we are very willing, and I want to see this type of housing develop in the city. It just goes back to what the specific agreement there was for, based upon the luxury housing, the description of that. And all of those who are being impacted by that are saying, this is not what was agreed upon with us as citizens here and developers here. So that was my key issue, and it wasn't these other. I did not see it. I would never support something that is racial or discriminatory against the handicapped, absolutely not. That's, you know, that's not what we're about. We have laws in place for whatever development, that it does go ahead and consider those with disabilities to make sure they have access. So to me, that's just where I'm at, but, you know, just, let's let the process and the other questions go forward.
Ms. Smith?
Well, I only have one question, and my one question is, does our land development code, does it violate Florida statutes?
The issue's not within the land development code, the issue's the development agreement.
Okay, so does the development agreement violate the Florida statutes?
I do not believe it does, based on what the case law is in regards of how we're going to examine this. I can't predict how the courts will rule, but I do believe we do have a rational basis under the development agreement in order to justify the language that's placed within it and how the courts will review such a matter. I believe that we have a sustainable argument. I'm not guarantee, I will never guarantee, and I know my, my colleague here will also never, she won't guarantee a result for her client, I will not guarantee a result for you. But I, I do believe we have a sustainable legal argument and legal defense to support the language in the development agreement that will result in the language not being discriminatory under 760.26. Ms. Nesta?
No additional questions.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right.
So here, I just want to kind of reiterate something, because you just said this. You feel you have a rational support, unsure of how, first you said you're unsure of how the courts will rule. You feel you have a substantial argument that you can support the language not being discriminatory. So that tells me that you're not even sure that we, the city, can really defend our...
No, under, my ethical obligations prohibit me from, from basically guaranteeing to you a result. I can't guarantee, I can't, I cannot ethically say, we're going to win this lawsuit 100%. I guarantee it. I can't do that. No attorney can do that to their client. What I am stating is, I believe we have a valid, sustainable defense. And what I meant by rational basis is that I believe that the basis upon which the courts will review in order for, because it's a discriminatory statute, one of the, one of the, under, usually the arguments are, the petitioner, the person who's filing the action is going to claim this is the, the discrimination that it's, that it's based upon. Now, because the issue is discrimination on the basis of source of funding, I believe that, that the courts do not review that in the same manner as discrimination on the basis of race, color, national origin, or physical disability. There is a different standard of review, and here, I don't want to get caught up in the legal weeds, and I'm also now, we're outside of the scope of the matter that's before you tonight. But my, my position is, as much as they believe they have a valid legal argument to state that, that the development agreement is inconsistent with 760.26, I believe we have a valid legal defense that the development agreement does not violate 760.26, and then it's up for the courts to decide. Everybody goes into court with valid arguments on either side. It's how you present those arguments and who's persuasive and who can persuade the
Because we're kind of stuck in the middle of this, have we considered maybe a third party to look at this? Because obviously, the city has a very strong stance and...
I won't discuss that now, because that's not the subject matter of the matter before you hear today.
It's not the subject matter.
I don't want to get involved in that.
So bringing it forth, if, bringing it forth, what will it accomplish? What will we be doing when they bring it forth? If we were to vote yes, what would be the next course?
Then it would be your consider, you would be consider, if they're, are you asking me if you vote to reconsider the matter?
I'm just saying, right.
You vote to reconsider the matter, the matter's brought, brought again, the previous request is now that, that vote is stricken, you're now stricken, but you're, it's coming back to be reconsidered based on the information they're providing. And at that point, again, you know, staff's recommendations are going to be based on what we believe are the, the positions, and then it's, it's, you're going to decide whether or not the request of the applicant is enough to support amending the development agreement. Let's remember, they asked to amend the development agreement on two, on two aspects. One was the, the line in the permitted uses that did not permit apartments that were not of market rate and non-subsidized, or subsidized. That was one. The other request was to remove the stylistic and, you know, the design standards. They were requesting they wanted some of those to be relaxed, so that, their, their request was two-pronged. It would come back before you again with the same request, to remove the language and the permitted uses in regards to market rate and subsidized, and to amend the design standards that were placed for the city center in regards to, there's a question about style of the apartments, number of balconies, and as such, those, those design standards that were agreed upon by the property owner and the city when the development agreement was adopted. So you would be, you'd be reviewing those again.
Any other questions for Michael? Okay, well, we'll look for a motion to approve or deny the request. We can, if we, we need to take, if it's a deny, we don't, that's just a one vote, or one vote either way?
Again, the, the statement was made in number four, that you really believe it's there as material mistake of fact, but I don't understand if that was an issue, why you didn't bring it up last time? If this was a key, this was known, this was a statute that was there. So just, again, for me, if we go that route, then what about the others who are already invested, who are already involved? Can they not come and try and sue the city to say, wait a minute, my investment was made based upon this expectation? Again, that to me is the criteria, not this other issue, although it was discussed. So I just don't see us getting there based upon that. Otherwise, you know, why wasn't that brought up as an issue that the developer agreement is against the law or something of that nature? So I, that's, that's just where my, you have any more to add to that, too?
No, that's, again, those are the...
Commissioner Smith's question, you know, that's, that's the real question here. Well, is that something that undermines this? Because that shouldn't even be in there, and your response is, that's not established? It's up in the air, and you, you believe that we have a solid leg to stand on, although not giving any promises? I'm just concerned about litigation going the other way.
We, I believe we have a valid defense. And valid legal arguments in support of the development agreement and counter to, I mean, if the intent is for the petitioner in this case to bring an action, both under Florida statutes and probably if we're going to look at disparate, fair housing under disparate impacts, I believe that the, the jurisprudence that's out there supports the city's decision on this matter. And as much as they'll have experts to bring forward showing a disparate impact, the city's going to have its own experts to show that there, one, there is no disparate impact, and two, that the city has a rational basis to support the language that's contained in the development agreement, and that such a basis is rational and not, and nondiscriminatory under 760.26.
All right. Well, I just, for the record, I want to just say this. From the very beginning, when Taurus sold the parcel, Taurus knew who they were selling it to. They knew they were selling it to Wendover, Mr. Jonathan Wolf, who's only, he's only developed affordable housing.
That's not true.
When you say it's not true?
Correct.
Correct. He's built, the property in Longwood is not for-
Okay, so, but we know him here. I knew him in Orange County is building affordable housing. So when he accepted the funds from the Orange County, the two, I guess it was $2 million, and they sent, I guess, paperwork here for us to sign, because I have that. Again, I know that I spoke with Mr. James Hitt yesterday, and he said there was nothing in here that would have allowed him to indicate that the property that they bought was strictly for luxury apartments. But still, we signed it as agreeing to, I guess, the, was that the land use for that property?
It's, as, as we've stated, the, the documentation is required, it's the equivalent of a zoning verification letter, to verify that the property has the proper land use and zoning to sustain the use that's requested. In this case, the use is multifamily residential.
And this is, what we're here to do is, it's, this is more of a procedural vote. This has got nothing to do with, you know, we have to meet one of these, these four. And so from that procedural, the merits of the things that you're, where you're going is really nothing to do with what we're-
Why doesn't have anything to do with it? This is why we're here, because they purchased a piece of property with the intent to build affordable housing. And we're saying that the development agreement strictly wants luxury, market rate apartments. So we're at a-
If, if I may, that issue was decided at the prior hearing. We're here, what we're here today is they believe that something was missed, that there was a mistake made, and it has to come back before this council for a vote. Whatever happened between Taurus and Wendover is outside of this purview. And actually, to be honest, it's outside of the purview of any type of approvals that the city's going to encounter. That's a private land transaction of which, I mean, I'm not going to render any opinion in regards to that, nor shall we even go into the propriety or improprieties or, or whatever regarding that transaction. What we have now is, we have a current landowner who's come in requesting an amendment to a development agreement. That request for an amendment was denied at the present time. Their plans for their use have not been reviewed by the planning commission, have not come before the city council for you to approve or deny those plans yet. All we're at is a denial of an amendment to a development agreement. That's the state we're in right now, is that they, they asked to amend a development agreement, and this council voted against amending the development agreement. And now they're just asking for, in the simplest of terms, a second bite at the apple. And they believe that they meet one of the four criteria in order to earn that second bite at the apple, which is the request to amend the development agreement.
And I move that we grant the request a waiver of time limit for the submittal.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith to waive the time limit for resubmittal pursuant to chapter, section 2.4.12. D. 1. A. Land Development Code by Southwick Commons. Got a motion?
So you had a second?
Got a second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So it's a two to three vote?
Two, three, so it fails.
Fails. Okay. All right, next up, authorizing an emergency designation for public services. Josh?
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. So last month, we lost three of our garbage trucks to a fire on the public services facility. And we were, they're for critical services. We lost two of the three frontload trucks that we used for commercial garbage. And we lost one of the three that we used for our residential garbage pickup. So we have to replace them. We were able, in the interim, to get three rentals to get us by until we can order or replace them in some way. And since then, we've also found two diesel powered trucks to replace two of those rentals. When we looked at the, the economics of it, the city, we'd come out a little better by owning the trucks than renting them. We have a, with that purchase agreement, we also have a buyback option on those trucks, because at some point we'll want to replace, or, well, not at some point, we'll be placing orders for the CNG trucks, which can take up to 14, 16 months to get. So we would buy these diesel engines to use in that interim. When we get those back, we can sell the diesel trucks and then put the CNG into operation. So we have a guaranteed buyback option. We may sell them on the open market ourselves. This is a, a good market to sell garbage trucks in. But, but we've got at least that option. So we know the worst case scenario on the buyback.
You know, I kind of lost you with sort of some of the chatter. You said you have diesel trucks that you can lease with the option to buy? I, I didn't get that.
We actually, we have, we're purchasing two trucks that have the option for them to buy back.
Oh, you're purchasing two trucks?
So we'll, so we'll purchase, and then when we get our CNG replacements, permanent replacements, then that one option we'll have is for that company to buy those trucks back. And that, that buyback is more attractive than rental cost. It's, it's, yeah, we, we in effect pay about $6,600 a month instead of $8,000.
So these diesel trucks are on brand new, or are they?
One's brand new, the other's 20, is one year old.
And they're both available for us to get now?
Relatively short term in, in terms of garbage trucks. The one should be ready now or towards the end of this month. And the other one, they estimate around October, November type timeframe.
Yeah, okay.
Any other questions for Josh?
Thank you.
The buyback plan, it's basically, it costs us $80,000 per truck to, for those to be bought back. Is any of that recouped through insurance coverage? Is because of what happened, the nature of the accident?
Not, not the rental. We, we'll get some insurance coverage for the loss of the ones that burned, about equivalent to one of the trucks that we lost, but-
Because they see the depreciated value is like 105, I think, average of, cost of three of them. So we didn't even, with the insurance money, we can't even buy quite one truck, based on the depreciated value. It's like if you wreck your car, you don't get-
Right.
-the brand new price. You get the depreciated value. So, yeah, it's going to sting a little bit.
Basically, the 160 that we would be out there, it still would cost us more to go the other route with the rentals, the bottom line. So this is the best route to go.
Any other questions?
No, the, the one comment, and you'd help me out with that with great information, is just the insurance that we're getting on those trucks is approximately, I want to say, $388,000. So it does cover one full truck and a little bit of this second one. So really netting, or we're coming out of pocket about $188 total, so.
Well, actually, no, the, the 388, actually, I don't have the price yet on the, but the, the, the frontload CNG trucks are $430,000.
Sure, once we get there, I'm saying right now in here, once we move to the, the CNG trucks, it's going to be a different scenario.
Right, right, right.
But right-
For the purchases currently-
Correct, where we're at right now.
Yes, yes.
So the bottom line is, we're still getting full value of the depreciated value of where the trucks were at when they were destroyed. So we're, we're still gaining, it's out of our pocket, but we're gaining newer trucks. So it's not a loss.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Anybody from public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, we'll close the public hearing. Look for motion to authorize an emergency designation for public services to purchase a 2023 and 2022 Whitkey, I guess, super duty frontload garbage truck, both on MAC TE chassis. All those in favor?
Aye.
We need a motion.
You need a motion and a second?
No move. Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Banks, and all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries now.
You want to leave, don't you?
I'm done. Move on. All right, next up, RFP for the health insurance coverage, 2022-71.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joe Patton, the Director of Human Resources. So I just wanted to bring forth this RFP with the committee's recommendation. Just to give you a little bit of background, we wanted to go out to our providers to find out if it was beneficial for us to become self-funded. And for those that don't know what self-funded is, it's an insurance program that, where the city would bear all the responsibility or all the risk for an insurance, for health insurance, where the premiums are paid into the city, and the claims are paid by the city. So we did a two-prong approach. We did it for a self-funded, and we also went out for a bid for a fully funded, which is traditional insurance, where we pay a set premium, and they handle, they take all the risk, so on and so forth. So it is somewhat beneficial for groups that become large enough to become self-funded. It becomes beneficial because, one, there aren't as many risks taken as far as cost or taxes, so on and so forth, different administrative fees that we would recoup, where the insurance company actually recoups all those. So we don't, we don't see any of those savings. We also take on, when we pay premiums, we take on those risks as far as their pool. So if they have a bigger pool, sometimes it's cheaper, but it depends on that pool. We also take that risk for individuals that maybe there is a, a city out there that has higher pre, or higher cost payments going out for claims. So those are some of the risks that, that go in with that. But it's, it's mainly proven to be beneficial to cities for that. So we went out to a two-prong approach to organizations that wanted to bid with that. We looked at all the information, the RFP proposals that came back, that was discussed by the committee. They weren't clear. They didn't provide all the information that we requested. And some of the information that was not clear were premiums that we, we requested, and we requested a certain spreadsheet to be completed that they did not complete, none of them completed actually, to help us better evaluate their proposals. One proposal was unclear in what they were actually proposing. They were proposing that a self-funded plan, but it didn't actually change anything. It wasn't really a self-funded plan for us. It was basically a self-funded plan for them, if that makes sense. So we would have no control over that. So that's, that's some of the information that came back. With that in mind, also, the rates that were submitted were higher than the rates that we would, were going to be paying with the current or the future rate increases that we were going to receive. So based upon that information, we could not make a clear decision, or a, a fully educated decision on whether to go self-funded or to change providers.
But the rates were higher in the other, all the other, much higher?
They were much higher than, than what we were going to pay now.
Okay.
Including, which included the increased rates that we were receiving this year. Yes.
Okay. Any questions for Joe? And what, just so everybody, just for the publics, what's the, do you got kind of a generalized premium for, for the year?
Yes, actually, our premiums are usually, for our base plans, usually $800. I think this year, it's $800.75 for our base plan. Then we have buy-up plans that individuals can move into. So if you're, you're, you have a base plan, and then you have maybe a Cadillac plan that you have out there that provides more coverage, or, you know, different aspects of coverage that they want to go. Maybe they want to go outside of a network, or go to any doctor they want to.
But I mean, so the 800 a month, so if that's, if we're, you know, if everybody does the health screening, it's-
Right, I'm, I'm getting to that part.
Oh, you, oh, okay.
So, right, it's, it's, it's just two parts. So this, this, our recommendation is to reject the RFP that was, that was presented to us, so that we can continue with our current provider. Along with that, is that we also would like to, this is for last year, these are the base plans right here. So if you look at this, this will give you the base plan for this current year. The one on the columns to the right for FY 22, 23, those are the proposed rates for the, for this next year. So basically, it's a 13% increase that we're going to have. And those rates are less expensive than all of the proposed rates that came in.
So that's just based on the ones that actually submitted?
Absolutely, that's all we can go by.
And that, what did you have? How many did we have that submitted?
We had four, I believe. Correct? Four, yeah.
Four.
And I'm just, I was just trying to run a real quick calculation. The, the city's health insurance premium for the year, so what the city pays, not what the employees pay, will be north of $5 million. Just so, you know, total budget, let's say, of, you know, 100 million bucks. So it's a, it's a, it's a good chunk of-
It's, it's a good chunk, yeah.
Yeah. So just so everybody understands the, the magnitude of health insurance coverage today.
So our second, second objective tonight is to bring forth with you the rates for this year. We've never done this before, from what I understand. So this is the first time we've brought rates to you. And in that aspect, I had handed out a sheet for you to the rates, the proposed rates this year. So with that, within those rates, we are including in that a health incentive for individuals to go out and get a health screening. So what we're proposing is, within those health rates, those premiums, we're proposing a $65 a month incentive to go get your health screening. Now, this health screening, it's blood work, and then you come in and talk to the doctor. It's about an hour total time that it takes an employee to do this. The employees will be allowed to do this during their working hours, just as long as operational commitments, you know, allow that. And along with that, we will, in fact, as you can see on this slide, that most of our claims that we've, that we've noticed when we did this research, is that most of their claims have to do with weight and diabetic illnesses. So the majority of our claims have to do that. So this is a target, a project that we're trying to target, to get individuals to come in, see the doctor, learn about their health. There's lots of studies out there that nine out of 10 individuals don't know how to handle their health, or have information about where they stand on their health now. And also, what we have is that individuals within the organization, this is only going to be for active employees, individuals on our staff, such as police and fire, they automatically get this incentive because they are required to do the health screening anyway. So they don't have to do anything extra for that. So, and we also started this incentive where we started paying individuals $25 incentive award to come in and get their health screening. This was during the month of March, April, and May. And some of those folks have already done that project. So with that, we have already, a little over 51% of our staff that have already gone through this health screening.
Can I, just one question. When they do this, is it confidential?
Absolutely.
You know, it's not shared with-
No, it's illegal to share this information.
Within the staff, within, none of that?
It's protected by HIPAA laws.
Okay.
Only, only the clinic has this information. Only, only the clinic has this information.
Okay, so it's not shared with their supervisors and directors or anybody? It's just, they're just told that they did satisfy by taking that one?
Correct.
Health, okay.
Well, we're, we're not going to know anything about where they are with their health or anything like that.
No, no, I'm not saying that, but.
What, what happens when we, when we talk about saving money with our claims?
Right.
It's about the claims coming in. We don't see the claims.
Okay.
We, we see basically so many people, or there were so many claims for cancer, there were so many claims, but we don't see names, we don't see what the claims were actually for, except for a generalized area. So we can kind of pinpoint where all this comes from. That's from the insurance company. We don't see any other information. We don't see any personal information.
Yeah, but you just said something that was interesting.
Yeah.
They will pinpoint where it comes from.
No. I said it pinpoints where the claims are concentrated in. So if you, if there is a person that has a claim for cancer, we don't know what it is or who the person is, but they will give us a generalized amount of how much money we're spending on claims for certain diseases, certain medications, so on and so forth. We have no idea who's, who's got it, who's, who's doing what.
No, I know that, I'm saying that, but when they're paying, okay, so I, I just have some concern that when we review those claims, when I'm just saying, and they say, okay, public safety, we've paid X amount of claims for cancer, you're still kind of identifying where it's coming from.
No, we're not. We don't know that it's coming from public safety. We don't know it's coming from public services. We don't know who it's coming from.
But we shouldn't know that.
This is a general, this is a generalized report that every organization gets.
That they do have that?
Yeah, every, every organization gets this, every insurance, self-funded, fully-funded.
Okay, so it, it doesn't pinpoint a department at all?
No.
It's just a general, okay.
No, I don't, I don't think I said that, so.
Oh, okay. That, I was confused with what you were saying there.
Yeah, no worries.
Okay.
So, so with that respect, this is, this is basically what our, the effect on, this is an example of effect. So our rate is eighty do, $800.75, that's our total rate. If you have an individual that goes in for their screening, they pay nothing. So if you have an individual that comes in and does not do their screening, then they're going to pay $65 per month. So if they get their screening before September 30th this year, and we will work with them, they don't pay anything for that, for that premium.
Okay. And there's no harm to them in any way because nothing comes against them? It's simply, it's actually better for them to know?
It's better for them. It's better for them, it's better for, actually, it's better for everyone as a pool because if we get our health under control and help individuals and help them understand how, you know, what's affecting them, if anything is affecting them, it actually brings down our costs, brings down their costs, so hopefully we can control premiums.
Okay.
Okay, that makes sense, it does. So now the thing is, are we going to offer as a city, once they see, I guess they'll be seeing the clinic doctor because that's where they will be going, or do they have to go to their own doctor?
Well, the, the clinic doctors will, are, are basically clinics. So if, if they find something out that, that of course they need some information, then the clinic will bring them in and refer them out to their normal doctor or, you know, give them information as to what, and of course, they can release that to their doctor.
Okay. So do we have anything in place as a city to encourage our staff, whether it is to exercise, to kind of have a healthy eating?
We do, we, we.
You know, because once they get that test, then what are we saying to them?
Right.
We're satisfying the insurance, but what are we doing to help you to be better?
That's a good question. So some other things that we're trying to do is we're trying to come up with some incentives for our programs for healthy eating. You know, we do have information that goes out to the employees from my health on site, from our clinic, that promotes healthy eating and, you know, to look at your health and to exercise. And also for, from our insurance carrier, they, they are coming out with some programs as well. So we're also talking about coming up with some information or some programs about maybe some weight loss challenges. We're in, we're in discussion right now with Mount Dora to challenge them to a weight loss type thing. They, they said they were interested in that, so we're continuing to talk to them about that.
Okay.
So our city against their city, you know, weight loss, make it a little fun and hopefully drum up some, some interest in that. Also some other exercise challenges, maybe at Camp Huiwa, maybe getting some pedometers for, for people for walking, you know, walk challenges, so on and so forth. So we're trying to come up some, some, some stuff that would help along that.
Sure.
You good?
I'm good.
Okay. Commissioner Banksen, you good?
Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
I, I like the idea of the incentive of giving back the $65 to the employees, but I do have one other question that's not even related to your presentation, and, and that is that I think it was three years ago, we asked a question if the commissioners could use the clinic.
The answer to that is no, because you're not on our health insurance.
Let's, let's find out. I don't know why we couldn't, I mean, add.
As of now, that's what you.
That is the council's decision. They can't be brought in, but if the council's always.
Because it's, you know, clinics, basically, we're paying a fixed, fixed amount for the whole year, so I don't, I don't know why we couldn't do it.
I already talked about that, so if you all want to go there.
Yeah.
I like the idea of the competition and I would like us to kind of participate in it. So it's not exclusive to staff.
How much are you going to lose there?
We've all got some, some opportunities for growth, okay?
I think, I think we can take you up on that challenge.
It's percentage of weight loss, okay? I've watched Biggest Loser. No, but I think it's a great idea. I like the incentive as well, and I think it just helps promote a healthy lifestyle and healthy habits, and that's huge for staff, our leadership up here, and then it'll trickle down to our residents too, so I think it's great.
And, and as the mayor said, I mean, it, it's up to you whether, you know, we allow the commissioners to go. I'm all for that.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other questions? Not, anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter?
Now, I look for a motion to reject the RFP 2022-71 regarding the health insurance coverage continuing with public risk management and approving rates for FY 2022-23.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, public hearing, ordinance number 2921.
Ordinance number 2921. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from City Future Land Use in Progress, FLUIP, and County Rural to Mixed Use for certain real property generally located on the south corner, southwest corner of Andike Road and Plymouth Sorento Road, owned by David L. Bachel, Wanda S. McClarty, Larry M. Everly Senior Family Trust, and Corinne F. Everly Family Trust, comprising 39.67 acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
Any changes, Jim?
No changes.
Okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2921.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance 2922.
Ordinance number 2922. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional District to KPI MU, Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use Zoning District and Neighborhood Overlay District for certain real property located on the southwest corner of Andike Road and Plymouth Sorento Road, comprising 39.67 acres more or less, and owned by David L. Bachel, Wanda S. McClarty, Larry M. Everly Senior Family Trust, and Corinne F. Emery, Everly Family Trust, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes, Jim?
No changes, mayor.
Okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2922.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up. Number, ordinance number 2926.
Ordinance number 2926. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the future land use element of the Apopka Comprehensive Plan of the City of Apopka, changing the future land use designation from County Rural to City Mixed Use for certain real property generally located on the north side of the intersection of Kelly Park Road and Chandler Road, owned by Robert T. and Elena J. Hutter, comprising 9.53 acres more or less, providing for severability and for an effective date.
No changes, mayor.
No changes, okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, will close the public hearing and look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2926.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2930.
Ordinance number 2930. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, changing the zoning from T Transitional District to KPI MU, Kelly Park Interchange Mixed Use Zoning District and Neighborhood Overlay District for certain real property located east and west of State Road 429, west of Plymouth Sorento Road, and adjacent to Joey McGuckin Road, comprising 31.93 acres more or less, and owned by PMS1REO LLC, providing for directions to the Community Development Director, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Jim, any changes?
No changes.
Okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2930.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Banksen?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2940.
Ordinance number 2940. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 171.044, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Harvey Godwin, located at 5206 Plymouth Sorento Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
No changes.
No changes.
No changes.
Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2940.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2941.
Ordinance number 2941. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, to extend its territorial and municipal limits to annex pursuant to Florida Statute 1714044, the here and after described land situated and being in Orange County, Florida, owned by Harvey Godwin, S., or Sap Rodney D. Life Estate, REM, Sandra D. Sap, and PMS1REO LLC, located on the northwest corner of Plymouth Sorento Road and Kelly Park Road, providing for directions to the city clerk, severability, conflicts, and an effective date.
Any changes, Jim?
No changes.
Okay. Anybody from the public wishes to speak on this matter? Not, will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2941.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nesta. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, ordinance number 2937.
Ordinance number 2937. An ordinance of the City of Apopka, Florida, providing for the abandonment of Kelly Park Crossing Development of Regional Impact and its Associated Development Order, providing for fa, findings of fact, providing for the abandonment, authorizing staff to record and transmit the ordinance of abandonment, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Jim?
Thank you. Jim Hick, Community Development Director. Sorry you got to sit through this one. This is the first reading for ordinance 2937. As, as the city clerk mentioned, this is for the abandonment of our lone DRI, which is in the north part of the city, as part of the Kelly Park Interchange Development Plan. This DRI was originally approved back with ordinance 2230 back in December of 2011, and there were about 12, 13 different requirements that were part of that DRI that have not been satisfied. They haven't been satisfied since basically it was approved. And that basically comes down to the original group of assemblers of the properties that basically did not do what they were supposed to do in order to get the property going. There was one, there was a couple of things that were done, but it was at the city's purview, not at the applicant's or the DRI person. That was the form-based code, which is now part of our land development code. And even at that time, when it, when that was first done, it was done separately. And when we did the recodification and the redevelop, and the redo of the land development code, we included that as part of the land development code, so it's a lot more enforceable versus just a document that tried to guide the developments up there. So some of those items that, that were not completed was the school capacity agreement for the development itself. There's, originally, there was about 540, 550 acres. I can only count 520 acres. So, and that's with all the different property owners that were there. And by the way, they have all been notified. They are all calling me, asking, is this still on track to get abandoned? They want to get going. We are processing plans for the development within the KPI and, and those properties that are part of the DRI. We can approve them, but they can't build or pull any permits or anything until this DRI is abandoned. So we did go before planning commission last night. I was kind of trying to make sure this was on a fast track so that we could, you know, get these developers going. It went before planning commission last night. It was unanimous decision to recommend to city council for, for approval of the abandonment. And then, of course, tonight is the, the first reading for the ordinance, and then we have the second reading scheduled for July 6th. That's a 1:30 in the afternoon meeting. So a couple of those things. One that I mentioned was the school capacity agreement was never done. The zoning and the land use were not done completely. There was a lot of properties that were up there with a, we, we changed it to transition from zip, zip or zoning in progress, where that was something that was done back a while ago. And so at least it now has an actual land zoning category, but that, that we changed to the different districts that we have within the KPI itself. There was no open space agreement, there was no wildlife management plan, there was no residential or recreation parks agreement, potable, potable water and non-potable water agreements, there was none of that. There was no storm wastewater management program, there was no police or fire or EMS agreements. In addition, the biannual, biannual report was never filed. So basically, they, they, they were abandoning the DRI without even, you know, without our action. And about a year and a half ago, the Florida legislation changed and basically they took out any requirements regarding DRIs, but for those that are, you know, those cities and municipalities and counties that did have DRIs, we, in order to get rid of them, we're going through this process of abandonment. In addition, I just wanted to point this out, our, our DRI is north of Kelly Park Road with this little pinpoint here connecting, and then south of Kelly Park Road. The ward property was originally part of the, the DRI and they pulled out at the last minute, so it's a very disjointed DRI in the first place that doesn't really function good because there's, you know, large property owners here, there were large property owners here, but some of the smaller ones in between just didn't make it conducive for, for actual development or the coordination for that development. And at this stage right now, we do have a couple of major players. Actually, we got about three major players that are working with what's left of the DRI in order to get, in order to get a development within the KPI concentric circle. I don't have that on here, but it basically goes out to, right, actually, right about here, and then down to Happy Lane on Detroit on the north side, and then Chandler Road over on the east side. That's that mile diameter circle that we've got. Orange County was also notified in regards to the abandonment. We have not heard anything negative regarding this. When we are originally going to do this, there were a couple of property owners that just wanted to make sure what they were getting rid of, and one of the things that we did put in to the, to the ordinance is that the vested rights that were originally part of the DRI, we are going to continue those on in the land development code, or, I'm sorry, in the com- in the comprehensive plan when we update that. So there's approximately a little over nine million square feet of non-residential, that includes hotels, office, industrial park, quite a few other things, and there's a little over 1,500 units that were approved as part of the DRI. Those are already getting chewed up by the developers that are coming in, so they already know that and it's just whoever comes in first gets them. So, obviously I'm here for any questions, but that's our report.
Any questions for Jim?
I know when this began, I mean several years ago, before I was even here, I knew some of the developers that were trying to make this happen, and part of the promise was we were going to see possibly this be an area where restaurants, you know, shopping, those things could happen. And so with this going away, is this going to end up just being, as you said, first comes first served and probably just nothing but houses? I don't want to hear that.
Just for the residential portion, there are, we already have three developers that I know of that up in this area here, we've got the main developer here, they do have some commercial in the lower portion, but we also have another developer in this area that is looking to bring in just commercial. And a mix, a true mixed product where you'd have commercial on the first floor and residential up above and then residential in the backside. So basically they, this, this main corridor area in here is our village center, that's the part that has to get developed in accordance with our Form Based Code, that's our, that's our linchpin, we have that intact and it's part of the development requirements. The group that ended up buying the Rochelle Holdings piece, they also have an agreement already to buy the RISER property here, we already have a general plan that's, they're going through the approval process that will be coming to all of you for some industrial warehousing which is job creation in the northern, or in the southern portion which is the industrial park area. And then they also have a large section up here which is in the, in the village center for commercial and then segwaying into some residential, and we do have plans for a road coming down Effie Drive into this section that'll actually have a roundabout and that will also continue down underneath the 429 with Joey McGuckin Road over to the Plymouth Sorento, and then we'll also eventually get the connection going up to Plymouth Sorento. So we're getting those, the network, the road network in there and also the, the commercial needs and requirements that are part of that. Obviously, when we, when we end up having six or 700 units here and then on the east side, we've got a few hundred over here, a few hundred up here, and then we've got another development that's looking into putting in some apartments and some commercial along Plymouth Sorento and the front area, along Kelly Park. The only, the only way you can get commercial to come is if you have those residential units, and that's what we're working on right now. So, one of the things that did occur with Publix is they originally bought the property as an investment and I already saw the potential for that, and they've said, well, we're going to hold on to it for five years. Well, two and a half years they built the Publix. And that brings the residential, but it also brings other competition, other types of commercial entities that want to feed off of that type of commercial, commercial venture. So, I'm not really worried right now, especially with the caliber of the people that are investing in the property and looking to do the commercial developments along Kelly Park.
You know, I just, I just was hopeful that like Stony Brook and the development there, there's several restaurants, there's that little central thing that really that's what everybody around here is hoping that we have, I just hope that we have room for that to still happen and, you know.
That's, that's, that's the type of development that's going to be happening up in this area here, and then I've already talked with the property owners down here about their development and that it's not supposed to be just fronting Kelly Park, that it's supposed to actually be a village center where you can go in and do shopping, not just see it on the front of the road. We want to be able to capture them.
Where is that again?
That's the southern side of Kelly Park Road right here, this is the interchange right here.
Okay.
And this area right here, that's what I told them, we need to have that in that area, they understand.
Is that opposite the new Publix, that whole section there?
The new Publix is right over here, that's on the east side of the 429, the intersection, this is on the west side. But this, this whole area right in here is all the village center.
Okay.
And that's, that's the part that has the most dense and the requirements for the mixed use type of development.
Okay, any other questions for?
It's exciting up there, it's rolling right now.
When you drive up there, you see the properties that were residential or a lot of them have been sold, some of them, the residents have been already torn down.
Yep.
I have seen that, so that's kind of moving in that direction.
Sure is.
Yeah, and it's moving quick.
And real quick, the other thing that we do have, this area right up here is the 52 acres that Orlando Health purchased.
Right.
So, when, when we see the rooftops coming in, that's when this will end up coming in because they're serving that area.
Any questions for?
Well, I noticed that it said that the school concurrence agreement had expired, and so I'm going to assume that as these other developers come in to start developing that we are going to make sure that the school board is on board, and then second of all, I know Pam is not here tonight, but as we continue all this development, we need to make sure that the infrastructure for those roads, Kelly Park as well as Round Lake Road, that they're leaving us some right of way so that we can expand.
Yes, sir, we are making sure that Kelly Park, any of the developments that are going along Kelly Park have the correct dedications in order to be able to do a four lane of Kelly Park.
You know, to add to that as well, prior to being elected, I was going to a lot of DRC meetings and Pam's little pit bull getting the, getting the entitled ones for that, so it's really impressive, and she has a whole plan set up to, to basically, once the development starts coming in, we can start redeveloping Kelly Park and Plymouth Sorento, so there's a lot of good plans in place, it's just waiting for that development to get there. So there's, it's pretty impressive what she's able to accomplish, I'll tell you that.
Yes, it's a great employee.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All right, anybody from public wishes to speak on this matter? Come on down.
Oh, by the way, regarding the school, they have to go through the same requirements to get the capacity agreement which typically shows that the schools are failing, and then you go with the currency and that's where they pay into the system.
The ones that are outside, the ones that haven't already gotten vested interests?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Rod Olson, 3156 Rolling Hills Lane, my only comment is let's look at putting in what we call frontage roads as opposed to just Kelly Park four lane run, we're running the same thing we have with Rock Springs Ridge with the Publix location, now we got traffic moving along at 45 miles an hour and there's no means for people to get out, there's constant accidents there, so look at the development as part of frontage roads which will lead into it, so we have a couple of light entrances that comes in, so you're not putting it directly on as we do with too many of our.
Okay, I'll answer that. The Kelly Park Interchange, the KPI Form Based Code does require grid, grid system, so everything is going to be interconnected. We only have one major development right now, but we already have them, they have already built that connector road to go to the south. And so that, that is our connector road that will be leading to the south to Joey McGuckin, as I mentioned, that's the east-west connection, so if somebody is living on the western side, they can go to the Publix without having to go out on a major road, they'll be able to go over to Joey McGuckin, take the north road going up, basically instead of going out to Plymouth Sorento, they'll be able to go up to the Publix without having to go out on the major road. It's called capture.
All right, anybody else from the public wishes to speak on this one? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt ordinance number 2937.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Velasquez, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next up, Resolution 2022-23. Mr. Rodriguez?
Resolution number 2022-23. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, establishing rate and fee schedules pertaining to the City of Apopka Industrial Pretreatment Program, Oil and Grease Program and the Surcharge Program and providing for an effective date.
Good evening, last, last council meeting, you adopted the previous ordinance which established the city's pretreatment guidelines as well as the oil and gas, oil and grease program and the surcharge program, this resolution is now implementing that program establishing the fee schedules in relation to that program. It's pretty straightforward, as we've noted, this is something that the city we have been doing by moving over all of our fee schedules to be adopted by a resolution, this is just a further example of this. It's all straightforward there, if you have any other additional questions, I'll be here to answer them.
It will be on the website for the public to see the fee schedule.
Yes, that's, all of these fees are always going to have it, the goal of deferred IT that they get there, but my understanding is, yes, we have the fees available on the website for the public.
Okay.
Rob's, look at he's nodding back there. Okay, any questions for Michael? Anybody from public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-23.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Velasquez?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, Resolution 2022-28.
Resolution number 2022-28. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Apopka, Florida, amending the budget for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2021 and ending September 30, 2022, providing for a budget amendment.
Vladimir Ortega, Finance Director, City of Apopka. Resolution 2022-28 is a total amendment of $886,107. The first one is the City Council Agenda Item Reference in today's meeting regarding the procurement of two diesel frontload trucks available from the new local dealer, and the total amount is 577,628 plus a 10% contingency, and an additional amendment will be made in the future for an insurance reimbursement as discussed this afternoon. And then the second amendment is the cost of construction for a Apopka Water Reclaiming Facility Barrow Pit, and the funding source is coming from the water and wastewater operating fund reserves. On June 1, 2022, the City Council approved a contract award to Providence Construction and Development Company, the construction cost is in the amount of 227,92350 plus a 10%, 10% contingency for a total of 257,16, so the request is for an amendment on the budget of 2022 on the 886,107.
Any questions for Vladimir? Anybody from public wishes to speak on this matter? Not will close the public hearing, look for a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-28.
So moved.
Got a motion by Commissioner Nesta?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. All right, City Council reports, Commissioner Velasquez, you want to get us started?
Okay, so of course we had the swearing in of two newly appointed or sworn in police officers, we all attended that ceremony here, so a welcome to the two new police officers. Of course, the mayor and I did attend the retirement of flags at the Elks Lodge, and it was probably about an hour of burning, of burning flags, but you know, a lot of people don't understand that when we retire American flags, we don't throw them in the garbage, we do a respectful ceremony, and each individual flag that is put into the fire is actually saluted by the Boy Scouts and their masters, and it's a real solemn ceremony. So someone had written to me and said that they kind of objected to seeing the American flags burned, so I had to kind of describe it as a cremation of the American flag because they do not belong in the garbage can. So, you know, I understood the person who wrote me and said that it was disturbing that they realized that that's how we retire our flags, but that is the procedure to retire the flags. We all attended the state of the county, of course, for Orange County, and then yesterday we had the Miss Apopka send-off and everyone got to meet our beautiful Victoria Sonza, who is going to be representing the City of Apopka on the state competition for Miss Florida, and I just kind of want to add this, that we have over 377 between cities, villages, county and villages, and only 67 cities do represent for the Miss Florida competition, and our city has been representing on that stage for over 50 years, so that's a big honor, and so I wish Miss Victoria Sonza, Sonza, a lot of luck as she goes to represent our city next week, so that's it.
Thank you. Mr. Bankson?
A couple of things I want to bring up, one, I'm assuming here that everybody got the same email, but I know there was question about, we had to take certain things off of line because of the problem with how they show themselves. So the agenda's in minutes, specifically minutes was requested, that is there a way to access, is that something that is accessible or is that part of that that we are not able to do? Okay. And is that a paramount issue to deal with that portion? I don't, I don't know the process.
No, it's a simple Word document, we've already made a compliant document out of it, we're going to get with Susan over the next couple of days, make sure she's familiar with filling it out, and it's just a matter of attaching it when the agenda's created. So it's, it's not a huge aspect, you just, I just need to know what you want on there as far as, you know, document wise, so putting the minutes on, it's not a big deal.
So you're saying that she needs to just simply request them, but we can't put them online, or are you saying?
No, they will be online.
Oh, they will be on, okay.
They'll be part of the HTML packet, there'll be a link for it, and they should also go into the PDF portion as well that's available.
Okay, great, fantastic.
Keep in mind, you're seeing minutes from the previous council meeting though, when the agenda gets posted.
Say that again, Rob?
The agenda minutes you are seeing, so for tonight's agenda minutes will be posted prior to the next council meeting when you get the agenda up there.
Okay.
So you're going to be two weeks behind just because she has to take care of the minutes and then get them posted.
Yeah, I just know for me, obviously we have access to those things, and it was just helpful for me to be able to go see that for the meeting that I had to miss, to kind of get, find out what all had happened, so.
Very possible, very doable.
Okay, great, thank you. The other thing is, actually, I called on our illustrious Rod Olson and asked him to drive around with me, and you know, since I've been here in the city, there's just always that question, why does, well, I'll just call it Operation Facelift, I think there's just some things that I would just like to see, why can we not look sharper than we do, and what, what is the mechanism? Is that something that is on the individual businesses, is there something that was in, was within our purview? And so we just went and looked and, and you know, I ask, you know, well, show me, because you know, he had challenged all of us to go and tour the city, so I wanted to know, well, what is he seeing, what are citizens seeing? And I know at times, when citizens respond to us, we generally bring it up and many times it is dealt with, but there's just a certain level of curb appeal that I think is just important for us going ahead, you know, and trying to draw economic development and moving forward, and if we can mainly focus on our main corridors, you know, our east-west, north-south, and get those more up to speed, I'm not sure, but my thought was to either put a task force together, a group of people, how we would, would we do that? To say, let's find out, such as I've gone and looked at some other cities and say, you know, Sanford looks very beautiful, we know, well, I remember years ago it didn't look as well as it did, how did they get there? I'm not sure. You know, Metro West is, of course, is beautiful, are these only the residents or the businesses, or do their cities work together? So I'd just kind of like to know, how can we kind of bring ours up in standard?
Well, we've got the, you know, Keep America Beautiful program, which we spent $4,500, I think, to implement that.
But that, isn't that more specifically the garbage and cans and things like that?
No, it's, it's, it's pretty inclusive.
Does it deal with the weeds in the sidewalk?
Well, I mean, there's certain things, but I mean, I just, but I'll be quite honest with you, we, we've reached out, we wanted at least 10 people in committee, and the first phone, or the first Zoom call we had, we had three people, so seven didn't even bother to listen on the first one, which was kind of like setting the goals, and I mean, I tell you, it's a, it's a great program, but, but if you don't get people to buy into it and at least, at least listen in, so we, and so, you know, Nicole was asking me, should we go ahead and, you know, have our next meeting? I said, let's wait till schools start back, I think right now in the summer's probably not the right time, but we've got to get more buy-in from the community to help us, you know, help, you know, clean the community, make sure it's what we, what we desire and what we, we think is, is some acceptable level, so.
And I had called Nicole and said I wanted to meet with her and find out how is this working? I guess for me, how are others getting there? I want to find out that mechanism, is it just getting the citizens' buy-in, or is there some other way that they're approaching it? And the two things that I noticed a lot, there's a lot of just the weeds in the sidewalk, something that again, if it's sprayed and killed, it just really changes a lot, the other, of course, is the pressure washing, and I don't know if there are certain things that we can do to move that forward, you know, we talked about the backflow preventer and saying, hey, we can, you can either do that or we can and charge you, I mean, I don't know how others do that, I just know where I'd like us to get, and I'd love to be just more proactive in that if we can. And I'd love to be just more proactive in that i-if we can. So if we do need to, you know, pursue these 10 and say, we need you to do this to help us get there. But if I don't even know how we're going to get there, it's hard for me to do, so. I just, I, I think it would just benefit us, just again, just our own pleasure, but I think it would help us in many ways.
What we'll do is maybe for the August or September newsletter, we'll maybe put together one full sheet to go in your water bill that will kind of lay out what we're looking to try to accomplish and, and so, you know.
Well, I think to, just let me jump in there real quick. I think some of it would help, I think, let us just lead by example. You know, getting the city buildings, making sure they have just some type of consistency, I think is going to be a huge asset there. And I was actually talking to Mr. Hit yesterday about the same exact thing, so it's funny that you brought that up. And I'm, you know, it's like, how do we, when you go to certain cities, Mount Dora, Winter Garden, what have you, there's consistency. I think that's the thing that you kind of like as you're driving through, it's consistent. There's consistent either upkeep or frontages on buildings, things like that. So, and, and, and I had brought up, you know, can we just at least get consistent plants along our corridors?
Yeah.
Somehow incentivize the business owners, landowners to have just consistent plants. That's it. And you brought up a great point. Well, Nick, you got to water them. Valid point. So it's, but it's, it's that kind of concept of how can we create just some type of small consistencies that will help us get there? And I think the, kind of the responsibility is on us to kind of create that expectation. You know, in a lot of South Florida municipalities, they have the same exact, and, and our attorney has brought that up multiple times, of they have the same exact color buildings or palette of colors. So creating that consistency, I think is going to be what really transforms our, our front, frontages, our, our main corridors there. So I, I agree, I think we should do it. I, I would just encourage us to maybe get ahead of even getting a, a, a task force together. Let's try to brainstorm up here, you know, try, try to get something moving and going, whether it's landscaping, even if it's just cleaning up certain stuff. You know, it's just one of the, the greatest things that I've realized with, once, once getting elected is that right as soon as I report, hey, can we clean up X or Y? It, it's Dunham's the next day, if not the same day. So it's really just getting citizens out there to report it and, or reporting it to us as well.
And I wanted to comment that, again, right here around City Hall, it looks tremendous, all the work that's been done. It's really brought up just that level.
Yeah.
And I'd just love to see that in our presented place. I do understand that 441 is a state highway and it's, it's a challenge there. But I just want to know, what can we do and what have others done to get there? Is that something we should consider or is it just merely a similar program that we're already working on?
Well, I mean, like we were, it's been a couple of months ago, the Women's Club, their, their street, their road designation is from Park Avenue, or is on Park Avenue from 441 down to Votal. And so I went out with them that morning and then we, we covered the street, had like, I mean, 10 or 12 volunteers. We covered our, that area and so they have to do it, I think it's three times a year is under the code. Now, is that enough to keep it where you want? Probably not. I mean, but that meets the, the designation of having a road, you know.
So the, my question is, are the sidewalks ours?
Yes.
The weeds, do we need to spray them? And if so, then, you know, I don't know if we need to invest in something else.
So the only other thing also, Mayor, is that there's a lot of streets that says this street is maintained by someone. I know they have one with the Boy Scouts, one with the Lodge. How do we keep up with those organizations who have posted a sign as being responsible for that street or volunteering to kind of take care of the street?
I mean, that's a pretty, that's a valid question. I think one of the things, the nice thing about this, the Keep America Beautiful program, is that you, you grade every month, you grade those, those thoroughfares. So it's a one to four and it's a pretty, pretty hardcore to get down to a one, which is, you know, perfect. So you, what you try to do is you try to make those incremental changes. So you go from a three or something, hopefully you never get to four because they even show you what a four looks like, what three, two, and a one. And so trying to get there and keep it there is the, you know, is going to be the challenge. But the program is a really good program. I tell you, and, you know, maybe we, we put it, I don't know if we can share it, probably can't because it's probably copyrighted, but it'd be nice to, we'll, we'll get some snippets out there for everybody to take a look at. But I listened and it was probably a two-hour, two and a half hour introduction to what, what they hope to accomplish. But it's all, it's, it's all based on facts. It's, it's very, you know, detail oriented. It's not just, hey, we want it to look good. You know, it's measuring that, how that looks. Yeah, it's, 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 it's really, really well done. So I was, I was, I was impressed with, with the presentation, so we'll.
Well, let's not let grass grow, no pun intended.
All right. Mr. Smith?
Uh, yes, and, and I accept that challenge as well, to drive around, look and see what we can do to improve our city. And, and it's not all residential and what I've seen is a large majority of it is commercial properties that are not being maintained and as Commissioner Nesta said, you got to water it. And so I've, I've spoken to code enforcement about several of those properties and some of them are already in violation. And so I'm hoping that maybe the citation that we passed in our last city council meeting, maybe speed that process up rather than being a long drawn-out process that helped to get our city looking better, especially on our main corridors sooner than later. I had opportunity to attend the World Council of Mayors, where they also allow city councilmen and county commissioners to attend as well and was able to sit with the mayor from Cuba, the mayor from the Virgin Islands, the mayor from Haiti, and several mayors from across the United States. And it was a very impressive event, a two-day event, and so I really enjoyed doing that as well. And attended the State of the County and of course, we look like we're on a great path if we can fulfill all the things that was presented to us at the State of the Council. I want to thank those of you that attended the Hall of Fame on last night, where I was inducted into the Florida FFA Hall of Fame, and thank the mayor for the proclamation that was presented at that event as well and Commissioner Nesta for your attendance, being there to support. There was an event also this weekend at Alonzo Williams Park called Boots, Bikes and Something. It was a very nice event, very well attended and had no consequences, no issues or anything, but very nice event.
Commissioner Nesta?
Yeah, top one on my list, congrats to Commissioner Smith on being inducted. I was trying to get, figure out what the new title is for you now, you're, you're famous. It was a big deal. I want to say it was 4,000 students there, so it was a really cool event, a little overwhelming, but very cool to see and congratulations. The other thing I want to discuss, at last night's planning commission meeting, they went over and kind of had some dialogue about what's the definition of a hardship? I would definitely recommend everybody up here to watch that recording last night, start around minute 29, goes to about minute 25, or 45, so it's about 15 minutes of just discussing what a hardship is in reference to getting a variance approved. So they're just having a challenging time making a decision for applicants to, to get a variance approved. So it would just help us if we just have, start thinking about creating a somewhat of a loose definition so that there's some leeway there for, for applicants, but just something that can help them be on one accord almost when that comes across their desk. The other thing is roadways, I had on social media and some other people reach out on, what are we doing about our roads? Things like that, are we keeping up with, with all the new development that we have going on? And we do, like I said earlier, that we have a lot of great plans. Kelly Park has a whole, I think it was like three or four months ago that, maybe even longer than that, but they did a whole study about that and presentation about how Kelly Park's going to be redeveloped. So I think that's a, a certain amount of it in the KPI, so that's exciting. Golden Jump can be repaved and widened and make sure that has a side to it so that it's a safer. 441 is going to start having, it's not pedestrian islands, I can't think of the word right now, but they're going to start having.
Mediums.
Yes, thank you. Because there's, there's been a lot of deaths on that road with pedestrians walking by. So this gives them a safe avenue to be able to cross. Coe-Popeka Road is going to be taken care of as well. Then we're getting the light on Jason Dwelling Kelly Park for the new Kelly Park School, so that's great. And I know that that parking situation is being discussed there with Rock Springs Ridge and all that. So I know that's on, on the city's radar as well. And, and then the other thing I was just going to be discussing was the past minutes being posted. And then I know I, there was some discussion too, and I just don't want this to get cold. The South Apopka Workshop, I know we're looking at that probably, hopefully like in August, September-ish timeframe. Okay, so that, I just want to make sure that expectation is being built correctly and, and that that's what we can look forward to. So that's it for me.
Cool, all right. I don't think under city administrative report, I guess only you'd say is we've, we've met with all of the departments once and so we hadn't even added up the numbers yet to see where we are in relation to the income coming in. But, oh, a lot of, a lot of, a lot, a lot of wants, so we're, you know, going to see what we can do. And so we'll, we'll hopefully have the numbers that, only thing we have now is just the adverbal. We don't have a sales tax projection, we don't have some of those other, other not revenue sources coming in to kind of balance with what the, the expense side is. But we're getting there and looking forward to the 25th, 26th, 27th to do that.
I know that Mayor Deming said that the county did very well this year considering post-COVID.
Yeah, well, they got a lot of money from.
Taurus of dollars.
Well, no, they've got a lot of money from, from the Cares money, which we, you know, if we'd have gotten $26 million like Ocoee, we'd be in a different position too, but we didn't. We got seven, so, I mean, it's kind of what it is. So basically, we got the money back that we lost due to, to sales tax losses and all the other revenues. So we, you know, we, we broke even and the county and the other cities around us came out smelling like a rose. So anyway, Michael, anything?
Not really anything to report, aside from just when you were mentioning the beautification drive-by and what other cities doing. You brought back flashbacks of when I was in private practice in South Florida, just as an example. City of Boca Raton has a community appearance board. In every single site plan, any type of redevelopment, anything, after you go through your whole process and getting approved by the city council, you have to then appear before the community appearance board to make sure that your project looks the way Boca Raton is supposed to look. And most of the times, it was called cutting a huge check to the City of Boca Raton so that they would then make it look like the City of Boca Raton looks. So that's one avenue if you wish to go that, that route. I think that's the extreme though.
All right, Mayor's report. This weekend, we've got two things going on. We have one of our Apopka celebrities, Garden Marcus, right here from Apopka, is going to be over at the Chamber of Commerce. He's got like 7 million, you know, Facebook friends or whatever. He's going to be here talking about, you know, veget, you know, plant materials, you know, interior plants, exterior plants. So he'll be at the city, or the, excuse me, the.
Chamber of Commerce?
Chamber of Commerce from 1 to 3. And then from 1 to 7, we've got the Juneteenth ceremony or, and, and, you know, festivities out at Alonzo Williams Park. That'll be from 1 to 7. So Garden Marcus from 1 to 3 at the Apopka Chamber and the Juneteenth celebration from 1 to 7 out at Alonzo Williams Park. And I'll leave with July 4, 6 to 9. We've got from 6 to 7 will be some kid activities. We got face painting, balloon tying, we've got a, a small rock climbing wall, all kinds of things for the kids. And then at 7, we've got, the band comes on and then at 9 or soon after dusk, we'll have fireworks. So we will see you guys then, thank you.